We'll begin the motion to recuse the board. The motion to recuse the board will be moved from our side to the board's side. Thank you all for your passes. So, first of all, we want to go tackle here, guys. The first form of number one of the Kirkwood School Board of Education is to advocate for students' safety as president of the board after leaving deep personal commitments to the process. I think that responsibility to heart. After numerous attempts to adjust policy violations and instruments to compromise supercomputer on February 1, at a special board meeting, it was difficult for the board staff to process the sensor occurring for them. However, this action has led to a joint statement. This joint statement, it reads such as this. Joint statement, Julie Backer, member of Kirkwood School District Board of Education, President Darno Frost, superintendent on the Board of Education. We would announce that a resolution disputes any issues as agreed. Based on the spirit and commitment to mistake, and we have agreed on a joint path, I will not ask for a vote on a motion for a resolution to rescind tonight. Julie acknowledges she made statements, did certain actions that were inconsistent with Kirkwood School District Board policies, for know. Julie Backer agrees that some of her efforts should be more directed toward good progress as opposed to personal advocacy. Julie Backer comes out as to the board, administrators, staff, and district stakeholder in order to move forward. And we focus on the welfare of the children, the partners agree, and pledge to recommit and enforce the Kirkwood School District Board policies, the board norms established by the board. That will include our board, that would include all of our board members. Thank you all very much. First off, I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to a fore. We're going to jump right into our next set of our public comments as well as our two planned over the course of time session. We have a number of cards here. First card, number one is Rob Hurst.
Thank you to the board and Dr. Conant for allowing me. Thank you to the board and Dr. Conant for allowing me to get opportunities. My name is Rob Hurst. My name is Dawn. There's just a few more months left at Kaden's age. This fall she'll join her sister at Tumon. When she arrives, she'll be part of the district's largest kindergarten class in a generation. Her class is expected to have one of four hundred and sixty students. The fifth year in a row, Kirkwood will have kindergarten class of more than four hundred kids. Compared to that, the current high schoolers, whose kindergarten classes went below three hundreds when they started. The district's five-year projections for kindergarten enrollment remains at that high level. Because the children who start kindergarten year six aren't born yet, that's far from projections go. There's still some confusion about this point, with some people suggesting enrollment will plateau or decline after five years. Anyone who suggests that either doesn't understand the data or trends, or is being intentionally disingenuous. The Kirkwood administration, teachers, and staff have been extremely creative in working with the resources to constrain what they can do. And it's a credit to them that the impact of the overcrowding of our schools has gone largely under the radar at some recent. It was only a couple months ago that many of us learning at elementary students were getting less time for their sessions, art, music, library, and P.E. because of the impact of having more sections per grade level. Or that some students were receiving instructional interventions in hallways and closets. But we as district can't keep our district's children and our overcrowding problems in the hallways and closets anymore. I'm glad that five of our seven board of education members recognize the district doesn't need another band-aid solution. And those five members supported putting Prop S on the ballot for April 7. Our kids need space. Our kids need Prop S. For those focused on the dollars and cents, it's actually pretty straightforward. The debt-living portion of our tax rate will decline by seven cents from Prop S taxes. That's indisputable. This is not a tax increase. It's a rare time that we get to vote to decrease our taxes. Also, not to steal my famous thunder, but I saw this on board docs and thought it was a typo, maybe correct one who's not speaking around that for public comments. The district initially assumed the three percent interest rate projecting the cost of Prop S bonds, that's not far from the three point two percent figure from the last time they had the debt lending proposition in 2010. But thanks to historically low bond rates and the district's strong credit rating, the district actually intends to carry the bonds at one point six five percent. Let me say that again, one point six five percent. That's nearly half the rate of our current bonds. One point six five percent. Can you imagine someone offering you a mortgage at that rate? There's a reason that school districts across the country, including five others in the St. Louis area this spring alone, are looking to take advantage of these favorable rates as we struck for debt. It's a great time to do so. The thing is, there's no guarantee rates will remain so low. Many experts say the presidential election in November could significantly change the bond market outlook. Now is the time to act. If we don't pass Prop S in April, we may look back and realize we missed a golden opportunity from a financial perspective. And our kids won't be any closer to having the room they need to learn. Let's do this for our kids. Or if you want to do it for your wallet, that's fine too. But let's be sure to take hold of this opportunity and pass Prop S immediately. Thank you.
Tom, we, it's one minute, you want to go, Rob, for me?
Thank you for your time. I wanted to talk about the best interests of our kids in the Kirkwood School District. What we've seen in the last few years is a transition. The concern for the physical and emotional wellbeing of our students is a two. And I want to give you a few examples. It's been our experience, along with numerous other parents, that the policy set in place for voting ten years ago, nothing was done and no action is taken, despite there being Missouri law against voting. It required the school staff to respond to voting. But for our child and many others, the school district knew about the law, but did not follow state law. It's also been our personal experience, while with many other parents, that 504 plans, which are set in place to help kids with disabilities, are not followed. Parents and students are simply disregard credit costs, wearing the features. But it's not up to them to disregard our children. The 504 plan actually falls under federal law. And not following the 504 plan is a civil rights violation. For our child and many others, the school district knew the law, but did not follow federal law. Seems that 504 plans mean nothing to the school district. Because of this, many families have moved away. Because of their experience with council, superintendent, the board, and director. For us and these other families, we plead with these people, and have to feel even more defeated than on the candidate for help. Our latest experience is just as serious as a bullying in 504 plans. Our oldest daughter Bailey is an amazing kid, who's very involved in school and is part of the honor team. She's also a leader and a strong advocate for best studies. In fact, you listened to her speech as a board not too long ago. We've been told that Bailey is a great ambassador of the Kirkwood School District. But recently, our daughter was giving a book called Fifty Seven Dollars. This book breaks down some deep social constructs of the world that we live in. A few of the themes in this book include views on communism, the Soviet plan, contemplations of suicide, a model psychiatric deficit, death, abortion, kids seen as inanimate objects, and pages filled with adult things and sexually explicit images. When Bailey opened this book and wrote a few pages, she was uncomfortable and immediately returned the book. Having not had a strong relationship with her daughter, we may never know. But there was no communication from teachers or staff about the book prior to her graduation. You chose to listen to Bailey when she talked about best studies. So when I came to Bailey asking about why this book was in the library and no one was there listening to them, she put her confidence in you, took off for her, and we better get it.
Hi, my name is Tanya Brad. My mom is Kirkwood resident, because I still grad. And I am a parent of a six-year-old from Kirkwood High School and have a son who's missing their mother. He's been missing twenty-six years. The issue of overcrowding and security impacts all elementary Kirkwood School Districts, not just people with school-like children or all school-like children, elderly children. I'm here to talk and support Prop S. Prop S would provide parts for much needed construction and renovation targets across the district. Of course, many of the main pieces of the new elementary, whether that's our current and future bulletproof, but let's not forget all the other important things. Prop S will fund, help, and facilitate the security of our students. At Kirkwood High School, which is expected to exceed capacity this fall, will be able to impose three separate buildings on the northwest side of the campus. This project would add seven new classrooms while improving building programs and student security. No more Kirkwood students need to go outside and switch buildings there. They would all connect and look at each other and awesome, and about that community might be wanting to go back. So when we elaborate, I hope we can connect all the corridors on the back of the building to improve the flow and security without having four new classrooms. The project would provide flexible space for lawyers, students, and faculty, that had dedicated space for the whole school. At Kirkwood Middle School, we would add eight new classrooms and free up small group space by moving the district offices out, and return in those areas the purposes that they were intended to serve. We would also input fitness in our space to accommodate the larger P.E. classes the school is seeing, while also freeing space for the banded school. Prop S funds would allow Tillman to build a new library. Sadly, currently, the building's library does not even meet the Missouri Department of Education's standard. Tillman would also build a new gym, so it's no longer needed to share the space with the cafeteria. The current setup creates safety issues. The press is watching, prevents most students from being able to take advantage of the full-size gym and P.E. classrooms. We can do better. Prop S would also allow Ben Dale and the Kirkwood Elementary Center to build the secure and trusted entrances they currently lack, that it's a huge security issue. And as mentioned, the new elementary would benefit students at all of our other elementary schools by reducing enrollment per school, meaning our members back in line with the student population of the school or neighboring district. Our kids will be able to receive the program around time for art, music, P.E., and the library. Construction can be done back in the learning spaces, not always a positive. And families who have been turnt away from an adventure club after school care that lack available space can take advantage of this vital service we need through the municipal government from now. Finally, a new elementary would relieve the pressures we are currently facing in our aging infrastructure. All of our schools will build it. To me, it's obvious that Prop S is the smartest thing to do for our kids, please join me in going against Prop S on the course of time.
Next caller, please, here in the audience.
Hello, my name is Shannon Hanchi. I'm a thirty-three-year teacher here in the school district. My statements and my opinions are those of myself and my own, and not that of my employer. There are four times that I've been brought to tears about this district. The first time is when Tom Keating passed away as our superintendent. Second time during the Kirkwood City Council shooting. The third time during the release of seventeen teachers and a large number of support staff during our budget cuts. And now, the article I have a week ago in the Kirkwood Webster Times. I have to describe it as a gut punch and soul-crushing. Detailing the risks among school board members. Now is not the time, of course, to be demeaning this because we're trying to search for a superintendent. We're trying to pass Proposition S. We have a school board election coming up. Every district has difficulty in working through problems. Every district has change that they go through, some of it through its own staff. This is not what has been best for our students, and it is not what's best for our district. Thank you so much for your resolution today. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now's the time for unity. It's going to be hard, probably one of the hardest things we have to go through as a district, but our children are watching us. Let's continue to do what's best for Kirkwood, but most especially what is best for our kids. Thank you.
Your question, thirteen seventy-one's add.
Hi, I'm Lori, and I am a fifty-eight-year resident in Kirkwood. I have background in Robinson, Robinsonville, Riker, York, and then Kirkwood High School. I just wanted to talk about the post-site of new school, which is just west of me on top of the hill, in Chillicothe, Alabama. I live on the creek, in Chillicothe, Alabama, six feet. I have heard that M.S.D. has not done their survey yet on what to be flowing with the water. And I can tell you that we have had two flash floods this, in twenty nineteen. I have lived that close to the creek all those years, and those are the first two flash floods that I have seen. And I can only imagine, once you cover over, take over, six to seven acres of the thirteen acres on top of the hill, right from the peak farther downstream. You're putting at risk West Adams, which is already having flooding from the creek coming down the hill and coming off of your property. There are two side creeks that are going to affect sixteen people on West Adams and in West End here. I have heard installed pictures of what the post-site looks like, and I realize that those holes are connoisseur, it's not set in stone. But Mr. Ronnie C. Lobo, who may, pointed out that when he redid the Kirkville football stadium, that M.S.D. required a million-dollar fix for the stormwater runoff. And that a football field is just over an acre. And you're going to cover over six to seven acres of farm that land that has streetwear and do so that the water, land that was farm property up until nineteen sixty-six, right off the property in nineteen sixty-three. And I just, I just want you to be aware that the neighbors that live downstream from that property, and the people who travel West Adams to and from, it's a big issue. The waters are now coming off of those sides at rates that we had never seen before. And if we can't control what happens in the creek, M.S.D. will do something about it, and it's not going to be an active case. And I just want you to be aware of that. I also found, when I was doing some research today, that we bought the extra piece of property at seventeen forty-seven, on January twenty-seventeen. And that was well before discussions for this program was committed.
Megan Stewart.
Hi, my name is Megan Stewart. I have two children at Kirkwood High School and one at Kaiser. My husband is also a member of the school board in Kirkwood. Our family has known Julie Backer since two thousand and four. I'm here tonight because I want to express my concerns over review censoring Julie in terms of superintendent search, as well as removing her from the Kirkwood School District Committee, including the special district governor. Don't know. Julie cares more about the Kirkwood community, the entire community, more than anyone I know sitting up here. She understands, listen to me, she understands the complexities of the Kirkwood School District and special school district dual system better than anyone I know sitting on this board. She knows it professionally and she knows it personally. There's no doubt in my mind. She knows more about the Individuals with Disabilities Act, I U.P. law, and other nuances of special education laws, like the Tillman family was talking about 504 plans. She knows more about that than any of you sitting up here today, making these assumptions and everything. If you remove her voice from these committees, you, our backs, if you remove her voice from these committees, you are silencing the many of us who voted for Julie to advocate for our families. You are silencing the person who we voted for to speak for our kids who are most at risk in this district. Some of them cannot speak for themselves. Some of the parents might get these school board needs because their children need care. You are censoring a very specific, very vulnerable population. And I find this targeted attack to be very disturbing, very alarming. I am completely dumbfounded by how district leadership has handled this situation with Julie. In fact, I find it a complete lack of leadership. I would expect most boards to have disagreements, to expect that. In fact, it would help for an array of different opinions on this board, but to air your infighting publicly in the media, that is embarrassing. Now here we are. I know you canceled it, took it off the agenda, but now here we are. And this is terrible. It is unconscionable that you would insinuate that Julie is somehow a glimp for the past failed superintendent searches. That is a lie. It is infuriating that you would call a meeting about censoring Julie without first giving her the common courtesy of a face-to-face discussion first. It is frightening. Here, my issue is that you behave this way so publicly and so viciously among each other, and then ask us to trust you guys to rally community support for Prop S. It's unbelievable. I came here tonight to express that, and I, for the first time, did not feel that I could vote for a bond or a cap.
I want to speak just a minute about Prop S. You know, this district built a search modern elementary school in nineteen fourteen, the same year that it upgraded over the high school on the ninth or sixth. They chose to get it for, because it was a premier builder and architect of school buildings that nationally and internationally recognized. The residents of the district had, had a current modest income, because it wasn't a very wealthy community by any means. You know, you view our educational system as somewhat of a three-legged stool, made up of families and students and their parents, administrators, and our buildings. Right now, one leg of that three-legged stool is broken. That's our buildings. We can't squeeze more classrooms into dysfunctional buildings and make them work. We need relief, the divided and the solutions that are provided for our overcrowding problems within the elementary school. Hope you pay all of these thoughts and considerations. Understand, we're not going to find fourteen more acres of places to administer, unless we get a big benefactor. And we can't afford to waste any more time. Our students are better than that. We need, we need to step up, give them the best opportunity for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to make public comments today in Kirkwood's service. Through the meetings, forums, conversations, letters, and other forms of communication, it is becoming clearer and clearer that this plan to address a very limited growth in our elementary schools is creating a picture in our community. Former educators and former board members in our community have spoken out against Prop S, which is shocking to me. I've heard from some of district supporters that have said they have categorically supported the school district when it comes to initiatives in the past, but this does not make sense to them. A new school in our community is not needed to address a limited growth, particularly when this district is not the district itself and over forty years, the balance of student population in the elementary schools. Rather, this proposition is to throw money at the problem, destroy land, destroy the goodwill that generally supported electric, and in all, in all manner of building that is happening. That is what is happening, whether you choose to believe it or not. Layer on top of this turmoil we are witnessing from our elected school board leadership, attacks on longstanding, respected board members, and you have to wonder how the community will rebound from this debacle. There hasn't even been, there wasn't even a recording of a special meeting that took place on February first, and the announcement of the meeting was major twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, the apply for common building board by Art Luther at the All Saints Church five hundred years ago. Only later was it added to the website, something as important as this with largely unseen, trust and transparency are not quite enough. We wish that the school board would have given the voters the opportunity to make their own mind-up and allow them to choose if they think the blue option was the correct option, but you have not. A decline in rent rates, a cost of prohibited housing inventory that, to quote Dr. Coffrin in your own report, states, "As assessed values of land, birth, and improvements continue to increase in Kirkwood School District, this may have a negative effect on affordable housing and delay first-time home buyers from moving to Kirkwood." Yet, still this board is determined to add increased debt to our community, even though the indicators tell us otherwise. Now, tonight, we're, now, tonight, we're going to hear about changing bond rates and how this is going to be so cheap. This has been time, just been time for the prayer for the campaign. Going back to my original comment, transparency, unanswered questions, continuing erosion of the trust between the community and the school board, and by extension, the district. Please vote no on Prop S. Tell the board that you want them to bring back the blue option or some other iteration that is more responsible, less destructive, and less divisive. This decision is not in the long-term best interest of our community or the student support service. Please vote no on Prop S. Thank you.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to come and address me tonight. Originally, I was coming to discuss the motion to refuse Ms. Backer from the district's search, but given the original removal of that item in the agenda and some of the comments already made, I just thought for a minute, we could take a step back. A step back and look at the bigger picture that I have been observing, and probably all of us have for some time. I know that me, my company, we work, one of our expertise is not only in leadership, but in leadership systems and leadership culture, leadership teams. And regardless of where you are on the issues, regardless of where any of us are on issues, whether that's the public personnel firings, whether that is Prop S, whether that is the teacher titles, or the removal of Ms. Backer from the decision, what we should all be able to see and agree on is that this team, this board, has become dysfunctional. This board has become dysfunctional not only privately, but publicly. The five big signs of dysfunctional system, dysfunctional culture are these, what I call palace intrigue, which means whispering, wondering, what is it that is? commonly in leadership like decisions when we make further discussions? We now have a whole community up in arms wondering about these things. Number two, reactivity and impulsivity. I'm glad we removed this item from the document, from the agenda, but the damage has been done. This, these issues have been here publicly now. The damage has been done to the board's reputation, to Julie's reputation, and to the school district's reputation. Number three, blame displacement. You guys pointing fingers at one another, not only in private, of course you would have a public disagreement, of course you're going to have a variety of opinions on these things, but you've done, you're pointing these fingers publicly now. District, you've displayed conflict resolution skills not even meeting the criteria that we require of our students. Number four. I realize I'm speaking strongly, and I will tell you too that I don't worry, I'm glad that people support what I'm saying. I don't worry, pause, I'm sad about this. The fourth being distrust, I don't think I could explain that. The fifth being a hurting mistake, taking sides and moving around in spite of the damage to our kids. So I would ask all of us, regardless of what side we take on any of these issues, we should all see that this has become a dysfunctional team, and they're most, they're most dysfunctional at the most critical time when we're dealing with all of these issues that we mentioned before. I've been watching closely the last 18 months. I say I've lost trust in this board, the leadership of the board, the superintendent administration. I would implore all of you to get help, to get some help for this unhealthy system, unhealthy culture that gets perfect, that that sign is hanging over us tonight.
Thank you all very much. We are at our time for our current session. We move on to our next. Next up, 2.02 approval. We have the motion second for, yeah, actually, we are extending. We have 30 minutes for public comment section. Okay, yeah, we will move on.
Cards, the cards, my number is a single one, C.
Okay, we have, I have three cards to finish up on the count. We will finish up on the count. We have the motion to extend. That, motion to extend on the count. Motion second, extend the public count. I'll break it out, I'll say it's against our board. We have the motion to extend the public count.
Like to abstain?
Motion passes. Next card I have is Terry Cooper.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I came to thank you for your service tonight. I came to support Julie Backer, which is really why I came and to say I appreciate that, that we, and let board members that are independent thinkers, that you're thoughtful in your considerations on our behalf. This superintendent search is the most important thing that you can do, and it's just critical. So I appreciate your removing your requests from the board agenda, but again, as somebody else said earlier, you need to get help because this is dysfunctional. So, in addition, I appreciate your comments in the paper, and, yeah, again, it is huge to the commitment of the community. It is appreciated. Oh, I'm sorry, Cooper, I think it's for you. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm 30 years, there's an unfulfillment. I had one draft that went through Children's Middle and graduated Kirkwood class in 2017. Only to change the agenda and have reported from the state camp, it was printed in the West Kirkwood Times by your board member. I've known Julie Backer for 15 years. The way she was depicted in the newspaper was slanderous. The meeting that was called after censoring was underhanded. The attack appears to be personal and not professional. In the time I've known Julie Backer, she's been the champion of the underserved district. She served the community this way because she cares about every one of her children. I know this because she does this as a single mother of four children, one with special needs, while working a full-time job. Her passion to help our children should not be silenced. Different opinions should be part of any major decision with different needs. Censoring her amounts to bullying. Censoring Julie Backer is a mistake. Thank you.
Well, my name is Leah Durbin. I've never been particularly political in nature, and this will be the first board meeting I've ever presented myself with. However, I'm so disheartened by the events of the meeting on February 1st that I felt the need to share some of my viewpoints. I delivered to hopes for Kirkwood Times, Jack Cavill stated that Julie Backer has many friends in the city, and I proudly proclaim myself a follower. Through our friendship, I have seen her work terrorously as a board member to understand the intricacies of the district and the work to make Kirkwood School District the best district in town. As you all know, the volunteer and unpaid position takes a tremendous amount of time away from family and friends in order to work for it better than for our community as a whole. The citizens of Kirkwood elect today, they all deserve, would best serve the interests of themselves as well as the community. To that extent, we believe that the Kirkwood School Board, while not all we can agree, will work together to discuss and debate what may be our district's best interest. From the article in The Times, Thurlow Cross notes that kindness matters. However, it article refers to a list of violations of the board policy. It appears that the list of unsubstantiated accusations and claims from two board members, that means only two out of seven board members are publicly disparaging a character and renovation from another board member. Ironically, I believe I read in a previous article in The Times about a vote from the private two resulted in placing on a bond issue impacting the city of Kirkwood and the Kirkwood School District in April. According to the article, Julie and Euphrenary were the two percent voters. My first and biggest concern is that the call for censoring Julie and removing her from the superintendent search ironically close to the sentencing of on the bond issue. In addition, Julie's vote for reelection in April, the true interest of the timing of the censure and the removal from the search could be called in question. Secondly, I wonder if Julie would feel that Thurlow Cross's fragile dress is concerned with her pride, as he told the board members he had come to do again according to the article. I have to believe that along with the proof that Thurlow has of her specific policy violations, also has recorded his conversations with her and addressed specific threats before bringing them to board in a public space. If not, I fear it is the faith of an active and loyal member of the Kirkwood community. In addition, I'm also very grateful for the fundamental, but to rest. However, I wonder what an apology will be issued to Julie Backer. Thank you for making my concern with the account.
Motion second for approval of our visit for February 10th, 2020. Regular board meeting, all the way, please indicate by saying no.
I'll keep this short tonight. More Kirkwood middle school students and Dr. Reese's voice in three store class were inspired by learning from the bakery situation. Each student was asked to create a recipe for a successful civil action. The recipe is a compiled fellowship of a recipe for civil action, book is now available for free at the bookstore. It's available online, the kind of link is included in the report. Also, on January 30th, 200-plus students from all five elementary schools gathered in Kaiser Library for the Second Annual KSD Battle of Books. Two teams from each school consisting of third through fifth grade students competed in a trivia-style competition for eight rounds of ten-question drafts. Students in Kirkwood High School advanced placement in language arts classes, submitted essays to the YES magazine national student writing competition, or YES. And students are invited importantly to read selected YES magazine on a fall day in town with an essay using a writing room. For the Fall 2019 Student Writing Contest, we invited students to read YES article native and European, How to Write On and Off, Hearts of Myself, My Family, The Fall. And you can see all the R Vs that received awards to the YES magazine competition. We had had students who had won the award every year last year to write poems, so thank you.
Now we're going down 3.03, we'll take that second. We will take the rest as you want. Our contenders, 3.01, approval of minutes for our January 20 record meeting. Approval of minutes for our 3.02, approval of minutes for our February 3 specialty. 3.04, approval of minutes for our February 3 specialty. 3.05, approval of minutes for our January 7 specialty. 3.06, approval of minutes for our February 4 specialty. 3.07, approval of minutes for our February 4 specialty. 3.08, approval of objects payable. 3.09, approval of personnel items. Motion second to approve that consent, send over now 3.03, all the way, please indicate by saying no. Motion passes. 3.03, approval of minutes for our February 1st, 2020 specialty. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm motion to approve our minutes for the 3.03. All the way, please indicate by saying no. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Next, 4.01, financial reports and revenue amendments.
Thank you. Our operating revenues for January were $23,850,000, and that consists mainly of current taxes with $20,845,000. Our selection rate for current taxes through January was 85.7%, and that compares to 84.5% last year. Operating expenses for January were $5,629,000, and most of that consists of salaries and benefits. In our technology fund, we made our third and final lease payment to Apple Financial Services totaling $12,294,000. This is a zero-interest lease, so the entire payment was the principal payment. From our Prop Icon, we paid $2,055,000 in principal and $264,770 in interest on our 2013 and 2014, so round the box. Revenue amendments for January told $350,000. We increased the early childhood special ed grants to match what's been approved by DESI. On the expenditure side, we reduced our expenditure budget by $100, also to match what was approved by DESI for our early childhood special ed program. We made other transfers, which did not increase the expenditure budget. It's recommended that budget amendments for January be approved.
Motion second for approval of financial reports and budget amendments, all the way, please indicate by saying no. Again, I have the motion second, approval of the financial reports and budget amendments, all the way, please indicate by saying no. Motion passed. Next, 4.01, discussion of the Dolly Murray class.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. First of all, I just wanted to update the board, because I know we all have been busy with the superintendent search. As everyone knows, the school district owns a property that was purchased in 1963 near the intersection of Dorrit and area limit, and the site, that site will be the location of an elementary school that is included in the project, coming with Prop S. The district emailed invitations to neighbors who live near the property inviting to attend two meetings of the purpose of discussing the project, to gather feedback from our neighbors and concerns. The meetings were held on Saturday, February 1st and Monday, February 3rd. Additional meetings with surrounding neighbors will be planned. At that meeting, we shared a preliminary sketch of the property showing, illustrating the plans of the property, that potential areas for building, including a perimeter of trees along the property line to show privacy, a rain guard to ensure water retention to control water runoff and purpose of filtering water, and the access point to the property being off of Dorrit area. The district does not plan these limits for vehicle access to the property, and if Prop S is successful, specific building and site design will take several months for us to complete. During these meetings, the main concerns expressed by our neighbors centered around the topics of traffic congestion and safety, water runoff, and preserving as much green space as possible. The city of Kirkwood has a traffic study that was completed by the district, and we will be meeting with them to review those results. The rain guard retention basin cannot be planned until the build and site plan has been designed, and upon completion, the retention basin will be designed and presented to MSD for approval. The rain guards will provide green space and learning opportunities for students, and the site will be designed to preserve as much green space as possible. So I just wanted to bring this to the board, to provide you with an update on what was shared in both of those two meeting meetings and to let you know those conversations will be good.
Thank you very much. Next up, 4.02, approval for one patch of North Kirkwood Middle School bleachers. Our facilities department solicited bids from contractors for insulation of new upgraded bleachers at North Kirkwood Middle School. Existing bleachers have been identified as a safety concern. The bleachers are no longer in code compliance, and they do not meet modern ADA accessibility standards. We received four bids. The director of buildings and grounds and I recommend awarding the project to the lowest bidder, which is Hartman Seating, in the amount of $53,473. We would like a 10% contingency that will bring the potential total cost to $58,820. We had estimated $40,000 for this project based on bleachers that we saw several years ago. This project was presented to the Board of Education in the fall with their dedication
This project was presented to the Board of Education and involved their dedicated maintenance plan. I'm recommending approval of this project to Harbin City.
Take the next round. The motion to second for approval of one contract for North Kirkwood Middle School bleachers. Any questions for Mr. Ray?
Mike, so this is over the budget argument outside. Do we have that initial funds that are approached to make that?
Yes, we will. We built ten percent contingency on all of our summer projects, so we, I know we won't spend all contingency on all these projects, so there will be savings that will be recovered.
Any other questions? Mary John, I have a motion to second to approve the award and awarding contract for North Kirkwood Middle School bleachers. I'll refer to you in the last round. Motion pass. Four point oh three, approval of C P. Approval of C P for construction testing services.
Thanks. I'm requesting permission to issue a request for qualification from friends to conduct construction material testing and special inspection services related to the projects identified in proposition S. Due to the aggressive timeline of the proposed construction, it's necessary to begin planning for the professional services needed so that the work can begin as soon as possible if the bond issue passes. If approved, the recommendation will be presumed with board in March.
This is an accident. Motion second for approval of C P for construction. Asking any questions?
I have a question. This is a request to see proposals for testing. And then what are you actually seeking? How many is the thing?
Well, we're asking for qualifications first. So that's the first step, is to get qualifications, because we have to make sure that whatever company is going to give us proposals qualified to do the work. And then there we negotiate the cost. But it would cover any testing that is needed once we begin planning construction. So it would be testing not only on the Dory area linemen side, but also the rest of our campuses that will receive additions.
And then you mentioned that aggressive schedule.
Yes, so if this passes in April, it'll take four to six months to design all the projects, to product a bid, collect bids, and start them by the board. That'll take four to six months at least. But it's then, for example, the additions at least ten months, the ten months or less to construct the additions. And for the new school, less than two years. And so it is an aggressive time schedule, and we want to make sure that the additions are ready to go for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And that new school is ready to go for the year.
Do you have any idea how much you expect this to cost? I know it's hard to, but just any idea of what's going to cost?
Tricia, do you know? It really just varies because, you know, once they start testing, if they find, for example, one of the main things that they test for is clay content in the soil. And if they find some, then they have to do more borings to determine how far home it is. So that affects things when we start constructing. One of the things that they'll test is the concrete strength. And if they find that it's not farming the way it's expected, then they have to do additional tests. So it's really just a thing.
I think the qualification for a mentor will be able to see any students that are not to receive based on technical qualification.
That's correct.
And then if they can't contain this, there is a situation.
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to present updated debt service projections, also discuss our bond rating, and then also the updated operating fund projections. On October, I'm sorry, on February fifth, Moody's Investor Services issued their annual rating report for the Kirkwood School District's general obligation bond. And I'd like to read a couple excerpts from the report. The first thing, that the credit position for Kirkwood School District is very high quality. It's double A one rated. Rated bonds are stronger than the median rating of double A three for school districts nationwide. Notable credit factors include a robust financial position, very strong wealth and income profile, and a substantial tax base. A second excerpt is Kirkwood School District has a light debt burden with respect to the assigned rating of double A one. And that direct debt to full value is materially below the U.S. median. Those are just a couple excerpts from the Moody's report. Also, I'd like to add that in recent months, bond rates have dropped significantly. When checking the interest costs for the Prop S bonds, the district assumed a three percent interest rate. And due to dropping interest rates and our strong bond rate credit rating, the current bond rates for the school district is projected to be weighted average rate of one point six five percent. Which is roughly half of what we projected in the hall. The major assumptions that are used in the debt service projections include not only the one point six five weighted average rate. But also that we would have a two percent increase in assessed property values during reassessment years. And that new construction would be eight million dollars in assessments over the next three years, and then buy a million. So based on these assumptions, if Prop S is successful, the district will be able to issue the bonds and reduce the debt service levy by seven cents and pay off the debt in seventeen years instead of twenty years. And all this is based on the extremely low rates that we can expect to receive. The total interest expense that we will have to pay is about half of what we projected. Does anybody have any questions about debt service before I move on to operating?
So if the proposition passes, are you saying we have light debt burden right now? It's still below the U.S. median even with profit.
That's correct. Yeah.
I'm trying to use two percent increase in property assessment there for a year.
In reassessing years.
Because I was just in Jefferson City today, and there are about four different hospitals that are getting property assessment moving forward. So I think that might also be a consideration, because they'll affect their home as well, since it's fifty percent. But if the reassessments cap, then that would definitely affect our situation for the moment. I'll give you all that information. I'll just take it up today.
Right, that rate will not change. We would lock in those rates and we'd go to the full terms of the bonds. Okay. So it's okay, I'd like to move to the operating fund. The projections that were presented in December, on December, the December second work session. Assume that if Prop S was successful, that the new school would open in twenty-one, twenty-two, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which only left one year for construction. We know that it's unlikely that we can complete the construction in one year. And so I provided updated operating fund projections that now assume that the school will open in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And therefore, any additional operating cost related to new school will start in that same school year. As you know, in two thousand and seventeen, voters approved an increase in our operating fund with Prop K. Through Prop K, it would provide operational needs or funding for at least five years for the school district. We have kept our operating expenses, expenses below three percent each year, which will extend our pay fund for at least eight years, like the nine years. And this is even with adding a new school in twenty-two, twenty-three. If you look at the graph, you can pull that up. For the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, this will be nine years after Prop K. It's projected to end with a fund balance of twenty-two, twenty-five percent, which is just below our minimum requirement of twenty-five percent. So I think we will get at least nine years out of Prop K. And these are conservative projections, so it's likely that actual need balances will be greater than what's projected. And so I think we will look through the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Just a confirmation, our fund balance must maintain at twenty-five percent for our board policies. So we would, in twenty-five, we would have to probably get additional revenue to maintain at twenty-five percent fund balance because it goes down to twenty-two.
We would need it starting in, potentially starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven. If, well.
It goes down to twenty-two, but it should maintain at twenty-five percent.
Right.
So it would be twenty-five, twenty-six.
We would need it in twenty-five, twenty-six, unless things come in better than projected, and then it would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Thank you, Mike. You have a question for Mr. Ray?
Mr. Hammond, I appreciate you sharing this with us. I'd like to highlight how well we've looked at our finances, and I appreciate the finance committee and all of their votes of work in really looking at our finances, looking at our budget, looking at ways to save money so that we can address the broken industry and get the student fees. I think this really shows that what we expected back, that we're getting much more of it.
Next move to the point of future events. Monday, February tenth, was our end meeting for the state of Florida. Friday, February eighth, was state advertising. Next, Monday, February eighteenth, Thursday, Thursday, November twenty-third, is the K S D F action swap, which is the K S D last quarter. Monday, November twenty-fourth, is our fourth quarter. Friday, February eighth, was state advertising. Monday, March ninth, was the next spring meeting for the board. Doctor Hammond, is there any more questions?
No, there's none.